So, just make sure it's on, Jay. So Jay from Stewart is here. He's been with us a number of times since I think our first kickoff meeting in September of 2021. And we are getting close to finalizing our comprehensive and KAMA land use plan, which you all have done the yeoman's work of this document. And we'll let Jay take it away. And if there are any questions or follow-up noted, we'll do that after the conclusion of your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Jay McLeod from Stewart in Raleigh 223 Southwest Street. Thanks for having me again tonight. It's great to see y'all. Thank you for the already, already to get started early, talking about comments and thinking about ways to improve the plan. So appreciate that. You all have seen most of this before. I didn't know how packed we would have an audience tonight. So it was kind of a walk down memory lane about how we've kind of come through a series of months and discussions and meetings to kind of get here. But I probably won't dwell on too much of that since you all have seen this before and you've been intimately involved in reviewing the plan to date. So in terms of the schedule, Melissa was absolutely right. We started off with a big community event at, on Festival Island in September of last year. And we've had a number of other meetings and surveys and community events since then. And here we are now in the public meetings associated with the adoption process locally. And then it will move into the review by the Coastal Resources Commission if it's adopted locally and referred onward so that it can become a Coastal Resources Commission certified KAMA land use plan. So I have been informed recently that the review process for KAMA land use plans may have changed a little bit in the favor of local governments and that it may not have as much bureaucratic red tape at the CRC level. It may not necessarily need to go to the board, but just to be approved by the director of the CRC. So that's good news. The plan adoption or plan development process kind of looks something like this. And we're kind of at the beginning of the public adoption hearings there at the end where that little orange arrow is. I could talk a little bit more about what's in a comprehensive plan, but I think you all are intimately familiar with comprehensive plans and deal with it probably almost every meeting and in between. The Coastal Area Management Act plan topics, of course, are required in a KAMA land use plan that's certified by the Coastal Resources Commission. And they are included in the land use management topics, kind of framed as recommendations, policies, and actions at the end in the latter chapters of the plan. And then also there is a holding, a place there also for local issues that don't really relate to any of these five topic areas, but have to do with just character and local concern. And just to kind of qualify that in water quality at the bottom there has nothing to do with drinking water. It has to do with environmental water quality. But that's the, that's the way they frame it in the state statutes. So again, we kind of, we had a great attendance initially and several other meetings. And of course, the best flyers of any project so far. You all have been involved in reviewing the documents and the information throughout and contributing perspective. And we're still going through that process. Before you're ready to recommend it forward to the council, you need to be comfortable with the plan and make sure that it represents a vision for the community that you can support. And of course, the community survey was a great turnout for that. We had a lot of wonderful responses. And I know that it gets used regularly, which is wonderful. The Visioning Open House helped develop the community vision and goals, which then guide the plan recommendations and policies and actions. The future land use, obviously, you all know that it's different from zoning, but that's something that's very important and sometimes tough for people to grasp is that zoning and future land use are different, but interwoven at the same time. So anyway, the future land use is what the comprehensive plan is concerned with. And you've seen this before, but it really kind of, I don't think it doesn't drop any bombs on what you had. It refines it a little bit and simplifies it a little bit, but also kind of maintains the nuance within the text that's associated with each of these areas. And then brings the sea level rise overlay forward again, which was what you had previously, but it just kind of brings it forward another 10 years to be more responsive to the timeframes that we're talking about now. And then, of course, we have recommendations framed as policies and actions for each of these topic areas for the purposes of the Coastal Area Management Act review. The policies get used reviewing permits. And then the actions get used to determine progress toward achieving the plan. And that's one of those things that the local government, that the town has to write progress reports periodically to the Coastal Resources Commission to justify actions that are taken. And so one of the things you may have noticed in the, this current version of the recommendations, then we now have a fiscal year for starting kind of the process on achieving some of these actions. And that can be amended as it moves along. So if the council needs to amend that, they're able to as they move forward. But right now it's to help communicate the idea that those are intended to be accomplished and kind of put a timeframe associated with those.
So what you're saying is the, the timeframe is pretty rigid, is it not? We were under the impression that the timeframe for this is a...
For approval, yes.
Yes, for review and approval here, but for the taking action on and implementing the actions within the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, the legislation requires that you attach a fiscal year to it. And so we make our best guess, but you know, you can only see so far into the future as to what the council may budget for or decide to pursue. So we do, we do our best. And then, of course, the, the last kind of section in there was more about town priorities having to do with the topics you see there and kind of making sure that we continue to polish, to keep the polish on the town and its goals and actions. And then tonight, we want to make sure that we have, I wanted to leave a lot, as much time as possible for discussion and comment. And I know that Melissa is keeping a record of these and will compile them and assemble them and make edits to the plan before it moves forward to the council. So that's, that's our intention for tonight. And so then that would be brought forward, I'm sorry, not the council, the commissioners, bring that forward to the commissioners and then kind of have the same discussion with them, just as you would with any legislative process. This is a legislative adoption of a plan. And so it goes through the same process that you would a rezoning or an ordinance amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions and/or discuss anything that you all may have. That concludes the presentation.
And so this, this item is again on, under, under new business. So if we have particular questions, we can really probably dig into those things at that point later on. And Jay, we'll call you back up as we do.
Great.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Members of the public are invited to address the planning board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on the items brought up during public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded. Do we have any public comments?
Only one member of the public here.
Okay. The public comment period has passed. All right, now we're on to new business. So this is the consideration and recommendation of the 2022 draft comprehensive plan, the KAMA use plan specifically. Okay. Now, do board members have comments?
How do you want to work it? Because we all read through it and we all have some corrections, additions.
Melissa, would you recommend, do you have a recommendation?
I do. So I've created a spreadsheet and Chair North shared with me her comments. I've reviewed Member Scarborough's comments. And so I just need to catch up with the three of you and make sure that, that your comments are also included in that document.
Because I'm sure a lot of us caught some and said the thing.
And so it's organized by page number and, and that way...
That's how I have mine, by page number.
Okay. And if you don't have a list, I will flip through your book and grab them.
I don't have a list. I just have red marks all over the book.
That's what I did, that's what I did with Member Scarborough, and that's fine, too. So what, what my best recommendation to you all is that if you've got it noted in your book or you've got a list, I will compile them all, yep, and then provide them to Jay. And Jay has a question. Hold on, get the microphone. So the, the recording will hear you.
I think we're heading in the same direction. It sounds great. I think if it's typos or misspellings or grammatical preferences or hyphenation preferences, I would say we probably don't need to waste y'alls' time on those. We'll collect them and make those changes. And you just funnel those to Melissa and they'll make their way to us. And we'll make those changes. But for anything that maybe is like, needs discussion at the board level, you know, like, I think that would be the things that would probably make the most sense to focus on with the group.
Well, a couple of the things, there's some of the maps where you have hatching or things like that. I think one of them's the, let me get to the one that I marked up. Because what happens is I'm sure the person that drew it up and put all the hatching on it in the CAD, they've got it at a scale where you can see it. When you shrink it down to an eight and a half by 11, you can't tell the difference or where it is. And I know I work with CAD all the time. So you think you've got a really nice drawing and then you print it out and everything's just all jammed on top of itself.
Right. Was that, you think that was a function of the low resolution? So we transferred the file so we could share it via email in this instance because we're on a deadline at a low resolution. There's a higher resolution version that's, that's on the website now. And future print versions will be high resolution. Most mapping products will be maintained by the town and viewed so they can be, you know, to have that resolution that you're looking for.
And I might suggest that aside from the, the maps as they are embedded in the document, if we could get them individually, we could link them on the website that way, too. That might would help as well.
Yeah, because what, what happens, a real good example is the environmentally fragile areas that's on page 51. If you look at it, you've got, you know, certain kinds of hatching on the map, but the actual legend, you can't, can't tell one hatch from the other, especially the blue and light green shades. It's page, page 51.
Yeah, that, that, I hear what you're saying. And that particular map has a lot going on with it. So I understand where you're coming from.
You know, you look at the map and you can see that certain areas are hatched a certain way. But when you look at the legend, you can't tell what the hatching means because the legend's so small.
Right. Understood.
Do you have any other specific maps? Because Jay is taking notes. So that... And Jay, while he's rolling through this, will, since it requires such a specific type of printing, will you provide the town with multiple packets like this, multiple booklets like this? Or do, is what we receive an online document?
Yeah, it'll be a high resolution PDF. It's typically how we transfer it.
How, I guess you should probably recommend then, because these will go out to the planning board, I'm sure, the commissioners.
We will, we have been in contact with the printer to, to get a quote, to be able to, when we get a final document, we will have them produced. And then what will happen is we will add a line on the fee schedule just at cost. So that if people want to purch- the boards will receive one because of, of course, the work that you do for the town. But then anyone who is interested in receiving a printed bound copy can, will be able to purchase one, but it would be at the cost, the same cost that we're paying per unit to do it.
That's super reasonable.
Will it be on, will it be on Unicode also? Is that separate? Unicode?
I don't, our current one is not on Unicode. It's, it's...
Probably not.
I mean, it's, it's a part of the comprehensive development code. It's one of the five documents. So the ordinance will be updated to note the 2022 comprehensive and land use plan.
Not an ordinance?
Right. But...
I just like it because you can search for things. I don't use a book anymore, you know, I just search for...
Yeah, so I can, I can help you download a copy where you could use like Adobe to search by word. There's a way to do that. Yes, I can help you.
Do any other board members have any comments that are other than grammatical?
No, how the maps are a little funny.
Yeah, it doesn't just apply to that map.
Some of them are better than others.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But a lot of them are, a lot of them are like that.
It looks like that was something we discussed as a group, more distinct color choices. So that, because in the beginning, there were like pinks next to reds. And once they were in a, in a booklet like this, you were like, can't tell one district from another. But now they're much more distinct. So thank you for hearing us on that.
Good, good.
You know, some of the things that I have aren't necessarily grammatical or anything. For example, page 47, efforts to minimize flood dangers and property damage. Talk about how you have to have either three, three-foot freeboard or an elevation two or above eight feet, based on the national vertical datum 1988, whichever is greater. And then later on in that same paragraph, it says, "This means that the lowest floorboard and all associated ductwork and equipment that services the structure must be elevated to three feet above base flood elevation." And it should say three feet above base flood elevation or elevation eight, whichever is greater. Because that's how the ordinance reads, page 47.
Gotcha.
I can see Jay without taking notes.
And several others like that. Let me find them. That aren't necessarily spelling. Page 35, soil characteristics. The last paragraph, the one, two, three, fourth and fifth line down, you have coastal plains in there twice. You have other very poor drained soils include coastal plains, depressions, flats, picocens, and coastal plains.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay. Well, anything like that, if you'll make sure, those, we'll make sure those get compiled and adjusted.
Okay.
Yep.
These are the things that only Hal will be able to help you with.
Yeah. Page 30, estuary and shoreline. You talk about normal high water. And in this area, the tide only varies about six inches from high to low. KAMA refers to everything as normal water level. Because the, the big variations in tide are just due to wind or storm. So, you know, there's no normal high water here. When you do a document for KAMA, you have to label the water level as normal water level, not, not normal high water.
Okay. I'll look into that.
Jay, what, yeah, what do you recommend? We, maybe take that out and see if, I don't know. Is that...
Yeah, that's, that's not ringing a bell. So I definitely want to research that a little bit more. But I'll, I'll make a note to normal high water level. There we are.
That's a good one. Hal, I did not know that. I knew there wasn't any tide, but I didn't know it was, you couldn't refer to it as high water.
Yeah. I mean, other areas, when you're doing a drawing, you have to show normal high water level. But here, it's just normal water level. Because there's, if there's no wind or storm, there's maybe six inches of variation from high to low.
On page 60, they say that their county's looking at a new elevated tank proposed. How's your town look? Isn't that their own?
That's the tank they put up about a year, a year and a half ago.
Two years ago.
I, I don't know, but this would have come directly from the county. Right, Jay?
Because that's, that's the tower they put in like two or three years ago.
They were, they were putting that tank in, yeah.
Sorry, I was making a note. Where is, which...
Page 60.
Page 60. Underwater Supply says a new elevated tank is proposed and planned to be located in a new section of the former Pauza Town landfill. And that's there. They put that in about two years ago.
Okay, must have gotten that from an older data source.
They probably didn't change theirs.
Wait, I want to see, can I put that down? Okay, I'm going to...
That's the last sentence there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to pull you to page 10 when you have a minute. One of the things we had wanted to reword or we weren't very keen on was, it says only approximately 3% of the town's land area is classified as vacant. It, that figure, I don't know, that, that's, do you, is that, Melissa, do you know that to be factually, absolutely correct?
I could...
It seems ver, it seems like really low.
It is.
It's, I mean, I know, we know that we don't have a lot of land open for development, but that seems extremely low.
So that's probably based on the existing land use map on page 55.
Yeah. Because what ties into that is the fact that there are several parcels that have an existing use on them that's either abandoned or, you know, not being used, that is available to be developed. And there are a couple of large parcels that fit that.
Yeah. Well, if that's the case, that was not, those were not pulled out independently. And that would have changed possibly across the time period of the study as well, right? Some of them would have changed, not all of them, but yeah. So that was, that's, that 3% is probably based on the existing land use map that was done earlier in the process and is shown on page 55.
And could, maybe we could word it to say, there, you know, that we don't have much developable, developable land, but 3% seems like a, it's a super specific.
KAMA makes you call out the percentage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, never mind.
Right. I, I agree.
Page 75, traditional neighborhood, primary uses. Are we allowed mobile homes in traditional neighborhoods?
Um, well...
The multifamily, not traditional.
And R2M, I think that would be a traditional neighborhood, we do.
Yeah, because there, there are several on the west side of 64.
They're not allowed in that little neighborhood in the picture, I'll tell you that.
Does it say mobile?
It's in the little blue box. And that's kind of the difference between future land use and zoning, right? Is that there could be several zoning districts that might be applied with different criteria where mobile homes may or may not be allowed, potentially even as a special use permit or some other kind of heightened scrutiny. So that, that's always the trick with future land use is to try and give some specificity, but also leave enough flexibility, you know, to where it can be, so, so our decisions can be made more locally than, than one map can predict for the next 10 years. Yeah.
Melissa, I think this is, a lot of this is stuff we've already, like, pretty much hammered out a lot. Would you be, could you look at the notes that we had and just double check that the comments that we already spent a really long time giving you were, may, a few may have been missed or something like that, just...
Well, and I, I have, I still have that Dropbox that I had set up. And so I can, I can differentiate, but go in and capture those comments to, to make it all inclusive.
Would that be helpful for you?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, we did go through those comments and then responded to them in the spreadsheet that was, that accompanied. So they did get addressed, pretty sure. But yeah, I mean, oversights can happen.
I'll start with his spreadsheet. That way...
Okay, that's, and we, that's perfect.
And...
Make it into your spreadsheet. Sounds good.
You'll, she'll compare spreadsheets.
Great.
Yeah, another map that I think needs to have something changed on it is page 31, estuary and shoreline and submerged aquatic vegetation. The marsh miscellaneous and modified are pretty close in color and they're pretty close in color to everything on the map. I mean, is it possible to make those bright fluorescent colors or something so they really stand out?
No problem.
Because it's all sort of muted, bluish greens and grays. And also, I don't know if you would be receptive to it, on page 24, the major plan recommendations. One of the things, everywhere else in here, you changed upland wetlands to non-coastal wetlands. But you have upland wetlands, third line down, under major plan recommendations. And the other thing is, the last couple of items, you have limit growth and slow down growth. And it'd probably be better if you changed that to manage growth in, in both cases.
I, I think though, those are the existing goals in the land, the existing land use plan. So this is where we've actually made that improvement. But they're, they're, they're recapping what happened in the most previous plan. So that is one of the goal, the upland wetlands is listed. And I think you might...
It's directly from the KAMA land use plan.
The blue piece of paper, right there.
Yeah.
See the, the goal here?
Yeah, no.
That's, so that, it's, it's listed under the 2007.
So you have to leave the old things there.
Yeah.
We were trying to get away from, get away from that.
We fixed this in this entire document.
Yeah, I know. That's what I said. Everywhere else, it says non-coastal. Because that caused us a lot of heartache and grief.
Yeah.
All right. Would any board members care to make a motion? Or would board members like more time to scan for anything?
Motion, recommend approval with the changes?
All seconded.
All in favor of approval with recommended changes?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Here you go, Melissa, just what you need.
I need to put your name on it. I gotta post you right here.
All circled in red.
Okay.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. I don't know how this works, so I'm not...
You're doing a great job. It's perfect. Okay. Now we're moving on to approval of garage at 412 Highway 64. So Melissa, would you please give us staff comments and information that you have on that?
Yes, ma'am. So this is, one of the reasons why I'm really happy that Matt is here. Because in trying to do all the things and all the jobs, some things have slipped through your cracks. So it is not typical, it is, it is typical that on any given day, we in the planning department approve a shed. However, and, and we require all the plans to come in and, you know, meet the building code specifications. So we approved a garage. But because the use of the garage was commercial use, we didn't actually have the ability to approve that garage. The ordinance says that that lies with you all. So... The ordinance says that that lies with you all, so we are, by way of this agenda item, attempting to fix our little hiccup that we had in the planning department. So, the, the building that is adjacent to Artie Sawyer's, where there are a number of things happening on that site, including LP gas, there's a cell tower behind the building, so when we got these plans, I asked Fire Marshal Zork to look into life safety, to make sure that issues, so that even with the proposed garage adjacent to the building, that because of the LP gas business that is behind this, that they were, that the fire truck would still be able to maintain free and clear access to the back of that property. And so, he has confirmed that this, this structure does not pose any life safety concerns. Fred is happy with the building and has worked with the owner on the appropriate way to secure the structure to, it is going over top of the asphalt that is in the parking lot, so Fred has worked with them on how to tie it, yeah.
It's on page, it's on page 144 of the file.
I can't, I can't read this far, what page we're on, maybe if I just go to the bottom.
Here, like 98, you got another, there you go.
So, it, because it's over top of existing, here we go, because it's over top of existing pavement, it's not adding anything to the impervious surface. From a zoning perspective, it meets all the setback standards. It is not a metal garage, they did their homework, it has wood siding, it does have a metal roof, but that is appropriate for the district. Because in B1, we have that materials, we can't have metal siding. So, there do not seem to be any concerns from the perspective of the ordinance about this.
So since you, you have ensured that we're approving something that you would have approved?
Yes, and did already, when I didn't have the authority.
Got it tied down, because it'll float away there.
Yes, it will.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. The garage is legal now.
Put it back now.
When I called him on Thursday, he said, oh wow, they're delivering it, and I said, Tuesday, we'll be here soon enough.
I think it's good.
That's great.
It looks, already looks better, it's kind of industrial, it is an industrial site there, so...
Yeah.
It is.
Lot of sheds and everything else are already on the site.
Now it's time for board member comments already. Jamie, I'll start at your end tonight.
Man, I got nothing, I'll have two next time.
Okay. Fields?
I'm good.
Dave?
I'm good.
Hal?
I'm good tonight.
I'm good tonight, too. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and, yeah.
I'm making a motion, will you adjourn?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.
All right. I'm still waiting for this big meeting to come up. Sorry.
I know, you don't even have to say anything.
Oh, well, Marshes Life will come back to y'all before that.